I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, with the changes of moving the executive session up to one and number three up to 1A, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull number four out of the consent agenda for separate consideration.
Okay. With the exception of number four, if we pull that out, put that, we'll move that to regular business. And then the other first three items on the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Will, you want to go into executive? Okay. And what section do we need?
Um, legal and litigation.
Is...
Oh, I'm sorry, employment and litigation.
All right, so STCL 125-2 sub 1 and sub 3. Well, and sub 4. Sorry, all of them. All right, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Session?
So moved.
Second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
We have our opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come up and address the board. If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Oh. Didn't see it, Tom.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. Come before you today with, and just for time management, I have five minutes, correct?
Please.
Come before you with two items today. First, I realize that on the agendas, the redistricting for, based on the census. And I've come up with a hybrid proposal that I would like to go and share with the commission. So if I may, can I share these with all of you or?
You certainly can, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. So just as a caveat upfront, I'm not writing this with any hopes or dreams or aspirations of running for county commission. This is completely just a unbiased view from the outside. Also, I have not vetted this for the legality with respect to the state constitution, if what I'm proposing is even legal, but I wanted to get this into consideration and let the legal folks, if this is something you want to consider, let the legal folks take a look at it. Basically, if you see the map on the back, proposing that we go with a hybrid model of having both geographic representation and at-large representation. So for the last 20 years, we've had this rural-to-urban movement which has been going on. And as you can see, about 80% of our population has moved to the northern 20% of our county. We've seemingly always viewed the county between north and south. And, you know, Commissioner Gibbon's, under the new proposal, would have a landmass, it's almost equivalent to the state of Rhode Island, to go and represent. So I took a different approach to this when I looked at it and divided the county into two right down the middle. So what I'm proposing is two geographic districts and then three at-large districts. This would also work in time with the current structure of the election cycle in that we have two incumbents, one which lives, would live in the west district and one that lives within the east district. And then the other three that are up for election this cycle would be completed at large. And part of the reason for this proposal is that it divides out so that there's no one commissioner that would have this, you know, very large geographical area that they would have to cover while you could have other commissioners that would have the ascent, you know, essence of about 10 square blocks inside of Sioux Falls to go and represent or inside of a city. I think it strikes a nice balance. Also, this is very similar to the challenge that the framers of our constitution and founding fathers had in trying to balance the rural and urban representation when they came up with the, you know, current congress layout between representatives and senators. So I just wanted to submit this this morning for consideration. I realize there's going to be public input later on, but I think, I've never seen a proposal like this. I'm not aware of any county in South Dakota that is doing anything like this. And again, I'm not sure of the legalities in doing this, but I just wanted to put that out there as a proposal. And I do plan to attend the public hearings as they come out as you deliberate on the redistricting. The second reason I'm here is with budget concerns. As most of you know, I've been out of the country for most of the last 13 months and have returned and lots changed since I left. One of the concerns I have is that, you know, we're not living within our means. And I realize, and I've not sat in a commission chair, but I've been on boards and boards of directors and I've also been on city council and township board. And, you know, you have a certain amount of revenue that is allotted to you to go and spend and meet the needs of your infrastructure and the needs of the county to provide the services that you need to. But I don't think it's a very good practice to go and tap into reserves on a regular basis to go and use that as a means of balancing your budget. I realize the budget has been passed at this point, that's certainly required, but I would ask you to consider amending the budget as is and the five of you forming a task force, and I would happy to be a part of this and share my insights, and I'm sure others in the public would be as well, to look for areas that we can reinvent government, be a little bit more efficient with some of the services that we need to provide and maybe think a little bit outside the box and try to find a way that we can squeeze some more efficiency out of the dollars that the taxpayers have already currently allotted to you to spend. Reserves are designed for a rainy day fund, and I'm absolutely a proponent of having that rainy day fund available. But right now, it's not raining outside, literally and figuratively. And we have more building permits that have been issued out in Lincoln County than I think any time in history. There is lots of growth. There's lots of people and money flowing into the county, and we just need to find a way to balance all that. I do think there is an appetite out there for a levy to pass to cover some of the infrastructure needs that we have, but it needs to be framed up in a way that is very clear, and it also needs to be communicated in a much better manner. And I say that I'm very concerned when you have a body that votes 5-0 to go and unanimously support a, an opt-out, but then you have 87% of the electorate come back and say no to it. And I don't think it's that they don't care about the infrastructure. I certainly do. I've been before this body quite a few times talking about infrastructure, but I think it's a matter in how you shape the argument and how you get buy-in from your constituents. And what I see is a communication problem, the fact that there's not a lot of listening going on. And this is on both sides. This is the people that are going against these types of proposals, but also all of you on this body. And I think there needs to be more interaction with the citizens, more town hall meetings, you know, and certainly with Zoom. You can even do these virtually, so you don't have to commit the time to meeting at places. But I think that listening to the constituents, there's a lot of smart people in our county, a lot of successful business owners and a lot of great ideas out there. And I think that we need to grasp and harness some of that ingenuity and success, past business success, and find a way that we can make our government work and function for everybody and get the growing needs covered in this county. Of course, a big issue for me is, and thank God while I was gone, we haven't had any big rain events, so my property stayed dry. But as I looked over the budget for this year, I couldn't find $1 allotted in there to improve floodways, water drainage, or any of the nature to correct any of the problems that I'm facing in my area. So that's all I have for this morning. Thank you for your time.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any commissioners, well, anybody else in the audience first? Limited to five minutes?
I'll be really short. It won't be five minutes. I was not going to speak this morning until Tom came up, Mr. Stengel came up and talked about the redistricting for you guys. I think that, looking at future growth, I think that all five of you should go at large. Because Sioux Falls, you guys all live up there now, and that's only going to get worse. And I look at what's down for Jim's, Commissioner Gibbon, I mean, that's a landmass that's horrible to have to represent all of that. I think if you all had to represent rural and urban, I think that would be much better for Lincoln County. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any commissioner reports this morning?
I had one individual call me, Madam Chair, that listens diligently to our meetings and just reminded us again to make sure that we're talking into the microphone.
I would agree with that because I've been on those calls and if you're not, you can't hear. All right. We are going to move on to our regular business. First, we're going to talk, just because I have to leave early, there's Newton Hill State Park project, and I've been asked to sign a letter of support. I think we have somebody on the line that's going to address that.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you state your name?
You betcha. This is Clint Miller. I'm the Central Midwest Regional Director of the Conservation Fund. We're a nonprofit conservation group. His mission is for, to, to do land conservation and natural resource-based economic development. And we regularly help partners like the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks secure key properties and the funding necessary to purchase them. So before you this morning is a request for a letter of support to help South Dakota Game Fish and Parks obtain federal funds to cost share the purchase of a 215-acre property adjacent to Newton Hill State Park. So this is the, only a request for supporting the grant application. There is no financial request of the, of the county. For those familiar with the process, or if we're familiar with the process, that we used a Good Earth State Park nearly a decade ago. This is nearly identical. In fact, Lincoln County provided a letter of support in 2010 for this project. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And if Paul Coughlin with the State of South Dakota is on the line, he can also help answer those questions.
Do any of the board members have any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Miller, Joel Aaron's here. Are the landowners willing to sell their land right now?
Yes, the landowners are willing to sell their land. In fact, they're under contract to sell their land with the State of South Dakota right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So can I get a motion to approve signing the letter of support?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
That was motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's?
Correct.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. I'm going to go, I'm going to circle back up to the item that was taken off the consent agenda. Julia, do you want to say anything about that? Or Commissioner Aaron's, you pulled it off?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Has the treasurer considered, instead of hiring somebody full-time, instead, to hire part-time?
No, I hadn't considered that.
You know, there was a lot of discussion, I think, that Fridays and Mondays and Fridays were the busiest days. Is that correct?
Most generally, yes.
Okay. And then have, is there a transaction log that's maintained in your office that tells you when people do the transactions?
No. We could go back and see, you know, what they do throughout the day, I suppose.
Like, for example, when you do a transaction on the computer, presumably it creates a log, right? And here's where I'm going. It sounds like you've done no analysis to determine what your, what your workflow is, when the most people are coming in and when they're coming in. So for example, are your busiest times in the morning or the afternoon? Are they on Fridays? Are they on Tuesdays? So on and so forth. You would have an electronic log that actually tells you when you're the busiest and, right?
I suppose we could figure that out, but yes, we're, you know, varies from day to day, too. You know, every, you know, Tuesdays are usually our slowest days, but, you know, we're just busy all the time. We have mail that we do all throughout the day.
Sure. So a big thing I've heard from some people is that you want a bunch of windows open so you don't have long lines. Well, in my thinking, I'm kind of asking myself, when do the lines come in? When do people come in? When are the busiest times? You know, like if you shop at Costco?
I don't shop at Costco.
Okay. Well, if you would,
Okay.
you would find that when there's nobody checking out, everybody's working, stocking the shelves.
And that's what we do, too. When we're not waiting on the windows, we're working on mail.
Sure. So what I'm trying to figure out here is, do we really need a full-time person, given the fact that your office has been able to get by with one less person now?
We have been getting by, but we struggle to get by.
What does that mean, struggle?
If I have more than one person gone, say I give somebody vacation, sometimes I give two people. It's the most I let have off at one time. Most generally, not always, somebody else will call in sick. So then you're down three people. That does not leave very many people to work on the mail or at the windows.
But we could resolve that with a part-time person, couldn't we?
Part-time people are hard to work with because it's, you kind of need it on a demand notice. I can't say, okay, I'm going to, I could say Mondays and Fridays possibly, but we're busy different times, too. So am I going to say you're going to be on call and come in and, and help us whenever we're busy?
What's the total overall cost for this person for one budget year? Salary and benefits?
Roughly about $65,000, $70,000 with benefits. With benefits. It's less than what we were paying for the other person.
Okay.
And, and it's a replacement. It's not a new person.
Okay. So this person will be employee number nine or employee number 10 in your office?
It'll be number 10, count myself and my deputy. Yeah.
Okay. And how long have you been without employee number 10?
Um, about a month, month and a half.
Okay.
However, long it takes to hire a person, which takes way too long.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, you know, I guess I'm in support of the replacement hire simply because, I mean, and I've discussed this with, with Deb, is the phone. Call, nobody answers. Call, I mean, nobody answers because they can't get to the phone. So that's been an issue that I know is being worked on and discussed, but it's frustrating to not be able to get through and have to call another office to see, hey, what's going on in the treasurer's office? And why can't I get through to somebody? And I've experienced that. So, so I think if that helps you getting that person filled back in to alleviate that concern, because people that are calling, they don't know. They don't know what's going on when nobody answers. So with that, I would consider a motion.
A motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. We're not going to get a second. Can I get a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just going to interject here. This person, it was approved. This person went through the recruitment process. They have given their two-week notice. They are planned to start on Tuesday.
Did somebody tell them the commission was going to approve this?
It's already, it's already approved position for the office.
No, but did somebody tell this person that this commission was going to vote in favor of it?
No, it's conditional on that.
Well, to get this off the dime, can we see if we can get Jim on the phone?
Does everyone understand this is nothing unusual? It is part of our budget. It has been by our previous actions approved. This is, as far as I know, a formality of completing the employment process. We have given them reassurance that they will be having a job. They give notice to their previous employer. If this is something that we wanted to do, this is something we should have done much earlier than at this day. I think we should support doing a whole county assessment, spending the money to hire somebody if there's such concern that departments may or may not have adequate staff or have too much staff. There's resources out there to do that, and if, if that's what we need to do, then let's do that. I would be in favor of that. But we can't do that just by somebody calling and saying, oh, I think there's too many people. We have to do an analysis that is independent, so.
No luck? Well, without the full board here, we're not, obviously. I mean, I could hand the gavel over to Commissioner Aaron's and I can second the motion. So I'll do that.
Or since it's a Thursday meeting, we do have another meeting on Tuesday. We could move it to Tuesday if we had to. I don't want to because it's holding that long.
That's the day she's supposed to start. Julia, Julia, what do you want to do? Do you want us to table this till Tuesday? Do you want, if we can't get anywhere today? This is unprecedented when we've already approved the replacement.
Yeah. Typically, when it's a budgeted position, this is a formality, and I can appreciate your questions and they're valid questions, of course. But then I ask that that be done before we start the recruitment process, so then the department head has an opportunity to address those questions before we invest a month and a half and people quit their jobs.
Exactly.
Well, maybe there needs to be a policy from now on that says, don't quit your job until you get approved by the commission. This isn't just a formality.
Well, I think when we advertise, when, before it gets advertised as an open position, that's when this discussion needs to happen.
This discussion can happen right now. It is happening right now. There's no law or prohibition or statute or even any tradition or custom that says we can't talk about this at the time that the vote comes up. We're talking about this right now. And, and we wonder we, why we have what is about to happen to the county happening.
I mean, to your point, if you would like every, before we open a position, if you would like to be notified the commission about each position before they're opened and advertised and recruited for, we can do that to have this conversation. But then the department heads are going to, you know, have to understand that the recruitment process is going to take longer. And in this market, it's already a tough market. But if you as a board would like to do that, we can sure do that.
Commissioner Gibbon, what is your thoughts? Did I hear this correctly? This would be a $65,000 full-time position with benefits?
Correct. Yep. And this is already in the budget. It was approved. And this is a replacement position. This is actually a cost savings because the person that left was at a higher wage, so there, it would be a little bit of cost savings there.
The 60, yeah, the $65,000 includes the benefits.
Yep, exactly.
I guess I still want to ask Commissioner Gibbon if he thinks that this is the appropriate time to have this conversation or should we have had this conversation before we vetted a person and informed them, which was our normal procedure up until possibly today?
How would you have known that, though?
How would we have known?
How would this commission have known that she was going to be hired?
She has her budget. It's her, the number of employees in her office are approved. She's working with human resources like she's supposed to, to fill that spot. This commission hasn't proactively told anybody that we're not going to, we're on a hiring freeze, that we're not going to replace people until we discuss it. So this is really unprecedented in my mind to do this. This is a process that's been in place for I don't know how long, and I'm all, I'm all for looking at changing the process if somebody doesn't like it, but to pull the rug out from somebody who's quit their job, already been offered a position here, and it's consistent with what we've done, and that's the reason it was put on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Gibbon, were you consulted about this?
No.
I wasn't. I didn't know it was happening. Do you get the agenda, Commissioner? Same time as you.
Yeah. So you didn't know it? Did you ask any questions before today?
So...
If you had questions?
Am I prevented from asking questions here today?
Not at all. But I'm, you saying this is the first time you heard about it. I'm just trying to get a timeline.
Well, I heard about it when it was, when the agenda came out, but you said earlier...
Did you not know that we advertised for the position? Did you know that we advertised for the position?
All right. Hey, point of order. Point of order.
Did you know we advertised for the position?
You said earlier specifically, there's a mechanism that tells us this happened.
Point of order. I'm going to point out that hires, replacement hires are consistently on this consent agenda and have been since we put the consent agenda in place. Commissioner Aaron's, you have voted yes to the vast majority of those consent agenda items. So I'm not sure why this is an issue today.
So I'm not allowed to have independent thought?
You absolutely are, and you've said, and you've said your piece, and that's fine.
So what are you saying to me, then?
I'm just saying that this isn't right. You're making it an issue. If you want to put on the consent agenda or you want to put on the regular agenda, the potential hiring freeze and that we not replace anybody without board approval, I am all for that. That's fine.
Well, that starts today.
Well, it's not on the agenda. It can be on the agenda next time.
That's starting today. I'm not agreeing to hire more people. I don't have to put that on the agenda. It's on the agenda here. It's agenda item number four. I'm choosing, as an independent elected official, to say no.
I'm going to ask for a motion to table the hire until Tuesday.
I, I think we already had one from Poppins.
All right. Is there a second? All right. I'm going to hand the gavel, Chair, over to Commissioner Aaron's, and I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
To table, yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No. It's a tie. The motion fails. I'll hand the gavel over to the chairman.
Thank you. Sherri, you want to handle the redistricting questions? We're just going to set hearings right now.
We're going to discuss how we want to go forward with it.
We're not setting the hearings. I'm going to come up with a better timeline on...
Do you want to, Commissioner Aaron's, inform the individual that you've just spoken about or about the situation we just did personally?
So...
I'm just asking.
Yeah. So let me answer. So you didn't get your way, so...
No, I'm asking for clarification if you want to do the line.
All right, gentlemen. Point of order. We have moved on. Madam Auditor.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is just go over what we plan on doing for redistricting. I'd like to know how many public hearings you'd like to set up, what information you would like to have presented at the public hearings. And where's mine at? And just so that we know that it will, the first meeting of February is when it will be finalized.
Thank you. I'm, this is obviously my first time going through this.
I'm mine, too. That's why I'm thinking that it's better... That's why I'm thinking that it's better to do it overboard than not.
Yeah, no. I think, well, my thoughts are to have two or three meetings, at least one of which is an evening meeting.
Okay.
And as far as what needs to be presented, I think, obviously, if we had some boards where you could look at each proposed redistricting.
Okay.
Option, I think we have, you had given us, I don't know, three or four alternatives?
Yep.
If we could have that to look at to compare side to side.
Okay. So if you don't mind, then I can come back on the 26th with the timeline. We can have meeting times, meeting locations. Do you want the meetings all here or do you want them? I, it's kind of, it's up to you, wherever you want to do them.
I don't have a strong feeling about where the meetings are held. I guess commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Hold one in each district, one city within each district. And do evening meetings.
So we'll do five evening meetings, so I can.
That's my recommendation.
I think one needs to be here, just simply because we have the conferencing and the streaming ability.
Well, yeah, and that was kind of my thought, too, about when we do them offsite, then there's not streaming. But I can contact the cities and see if we can get it to coincide with one of their city meetings.
Sure.
Commissioner Poppins, are you proposing five meetings then?
That would make some sense in the communities than which, a significant city inside those communities.
So what would be then, three?
So we can have four night meetings and.
We have five districts.
Yeah, I know, but.
Four night meetings and one day meeting, the day meeting being here.
Day meeting being here.
So we can do the four in the different districts. We can do it in Harrisburg, Lenox, T, and Sioux Falls. That should get us covered through the county, don't you think?
Besides having the one here, then?
Besides having the one here. And the one here, then we can do live stream and get everybody in on.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes. Does for me, anyway.
So I'll get ahold of the cities and get it to coincide with their city meetings and come up with the timeline for that.
All right.
Okay. And then, yep, we'll get the boards with GIS. I've also asked GIS to get some, the information that I sent you, get some more locations on it. Because when I look at this, it's hard for me to see what they're actually, the road, without the road markers, so.
Is it possible to have the individual from CCOG who's responsible for drawing these maps present at the meeting? Now, I know that the lady who did this.
Resigned.
I read an email chain. She moved to a different job.
Yep.
But I'm going to presume that there's some kind of handoff going on. Because CCOG doesn't just do this for Lincoln County. They do it for a lot of entities.
Yep.
So whoever took the baton from that lady, let's coordinate to have that person there so they can answer any mechanical details if citizens have a question about why something was drawn the way it was. Because we wouldn't be able to answer that.
I would, well, I mean, we would based on the deviation. But nope, I agree, that's a good idea. I will talk to him and see who I can get over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on them?
No.
Okay, so I will get all that together. I'll present the timeline on the 26th. Because I'll have to work with the cities and see what their meetings were. And then we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. We will move on to item two on our agenda, which is the board action defining details of a jail study group. I've got Commissioner Aaron's name on that and Deputy State's Attorney Bill Golden's name on that.
I believe the board had taken action on it previously at a previous meeting. It came from the courthouse committee that, I believe it was to set up another committee on a regional jail, possibly.
Okay, and has that been done?
I don't know that the commission has given any direction one way or another on that.
Well, who wanted this on the agenda, I guess? Who put it on?
I put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Due to the fact that I sent out an email requesting if it should be permanently removed, and I received nothing back.
Okay. So are we going to disband this approved jail study group? Commissioners?
Commissioner Aaron's, where are we at in the process? Can you enlighten the board and the members of the public?
Well, we're not at the point where we can study a jail yet because we're still studying the courthouse improvements.
There'd been some conversation. I didn't know if that's integrated into the discussion or if that needs to be a separate discussion.
It's not. One of the issue, we're going to run into several issues. Number one, if we want to start studying a regional jail, which was one of the recommendations reported out of the courthouse improvement committee, what we have to do is we're going to have to appropriate money to be able to pay for either engineers or consultants to provide us with information regarding jail studies, numbers, and those sorts of things. And we don't have the infrastructure in place yet to do that. Now, certainly, the courthouse improvement committee could meet as a body of laypeople to talk about it, but it won't go very far. It won't be very productive conversations. And so I don't think we're in a position yet to be able to start talking about the jail. However, if one of the other commissioners wants to suggest a plan of action for studying the jail study group, I think we'd be all ears to listen to that.
Have we received any confirmation from Minniac County as to how long we are guaranteed yet of space up there?
Yeah, you received the same report that all the rest of us did. The jail, the jail study consultant, his name is escaping me at this point, provided, you've been provided with that same report that I have been. So you have those numbers. And I believe Sheriff Milstead made some public comments on the issue as well. And I don't know if you've personally contacted Sheriff Milstead or not.
Well, we've done a couple of different jail studies already and paid for those. I mean, I think some of that groundwork has already been done. So if there's not an active group that's going to be looking at this because of what we're facing with the courtrooms right now, I would ask for a motion to disband the jail study group.
I'll offer the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for a discussion.
Any further discussion? I think we would have to figure out how we're paying for the courtrooms. I think that was some of the feeling behind having a jail study group was if we had a jail, we could transfer the $200,000 a month that we're paying to Minniaha County to help pay for the courtrooms and jail. That was the tie-in, I guess, for me. So if it's going to be looked at in conjunction with paying for the courtrooms, I think that's, that makes sense. But I don't think we can look at spending any more money right now, given the fact that it hasn't been figured out how we're paying for these courtrooms, so.
And as far as the jail study, the, by conversations or statements made that the last election, taxpayers were glad to send their money up to Minniac County to house their prisoners there. So it really was not a consensus to actually start to discuss building a jail, so. So the conversation in, by a body about a jail would be inappropriate, I think, at this time.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. And then we have Wendy, your report.
Good morning. This is just my third quarter report for 4H. It is National 4H Week, so happy National 4H Week to you. As far as the grounds, the highway department came and mowed our grass September 13th in preparation for the dirt work will take place. We held a groundbreaking on September 27th, and the dirt company planned to move their equipment to the site this weekend. Also, you should note that the electric company that was renting the north part of our property has moved out except for one storage unit that is left to leave hopefully this week. As for shooting sports, we had 10 Lincoln County foragers participate in the summer shooting sports season, with four of them going to the state muzzleloader and trap shoot. We had muzzleloader practice at our grounds Tuesday and Sunday evenings. And they did the trap practice Wednesday evenings here in Canton at the Sioux River Sportsman's Club. This report includes our busiest time of the year, where we had all of our summer activities. We held our county special foods contest at Lennox High School in July, and we had 10 members from our county, along with three from Union and one from Minniaha, come to this. And at this contest, foragers have 90 minutes to cook a dish in front of judges, set a place setting, and have a nutrition interview. We hosted a livestock judging contest July 16th at the 4H complex. This contest is part of the state livestock judging series where participants earn points toward an end-of-the-year award. We had 42 contestants from nine counties in South Dakota and two counties in Minnesota. And in order for this to work in Lennox, we used our partnership with the Sioux Empire Livestock Show to borrow some livestock panels to make pens for hogs and goats and worked with the Lennox sons from FFA Chapter to use their sheep rack and some of their sheep for class. We also had various forage families provide the rest of the livestock. We had three members participate in the joint county dog show with Minniaha County in Sioux Falls, July 18th. Our county fashion review contest was held at the 4H complex with 33 entries, and we used our north office as the dressing room and the large room for our judging. And then Achievement Days was July 25th through the 29th. We started with static check-in on that Sunday. We had judging on that Monday, and large animal livestock was checked in in Canton on that Monday as well, as followed by dairy goat, dairy cattle, sheep and goat show that evening. And then with the heat, we had to make some adjustments to keep our animals and our kids cooler. So we moved our poultry show start time up in the day, had swine show in the evening, and moved our beef show up and round robin earlier in the day. And then we ended on July 29th with the companion animal show and rabbit shows in Lennox, along with cloverbud show and tell, balloon animals bingo, and a barbecue that day. We also collected food items for the food pantries in the county. Those were delivered to Beersford, Canton, Lennox T, and Harrisburg. And for the statewide community service project that wrapped up in August, we collected 174 pairs of eyeglasses that were donated to the Lions Club. Our summer intern, Carissa Sweater, and three foragers talked about their animals at the Hudson Library, August 3rd. And then for state fair activities, we had three members compete in state companion animal show and two in the dog show, and they all did very well at both of those shows. We had 127 static exhibits and 108 livestock exhibits. Lincoln County had the most members participating in the state fashion review contest. And we had an excellent showing at state fair with more details to come in the annual report. We had nine members participate in state livestock judging contest in Brookings in September. Senior team was third and our third, our beginners were first. Carissa and I judged 4H exhibits in Minniaha County, August 6th. I judged 4H exhibits in Turner County, August 16th. Carissa wrapped up her internship on that August 6th date. And I served on this 4H poultry committee and consumer decision-making skeleton committee for our state fair. And then it just has our facility usage, which included most of our report. But I will note that we had two joint dog practices there. Otherwise, we've been practicing in Sioux Falls at Sioux Empire Fairgrounds. Our facility is considerably better than what we were using in Sioux Falls. So we are going to start having dog practices at our building with conjunction with Minniaha County, starting in two weeks. And then you'll note, coming up in Lennox, the Lennox Boosters has their event tomorrow. That was supposed to be August 28th. Then we'll have, CFEO has a brunch, recognition events coming up in November, and we have a couple of more events in November. And then this week so far, we held a 4H open house on Sunday at our grounds that we had our 4H families talk about some of the things that you could do in 4H, and we had a good turnout for that. And then we also went to the corn maze on Monday as our, one of our activities, so. That's my report.
All right, thanks, Wendy. All right, I'm going to turn the chair over to Commissioner Aaron's.
Next issue on the agenda, renewal quote with Jensen Insurance placed on the agenda by the auditor.
Greetings from the southern end of the county. Would be all right if I approached the bench and handed out some, some trinkets?
Of course.
Very good.
There you go, thank you. Sorry, Mark, I can't accept anything from you, so.
You can't do it?
I can't do it.
Would you rather I not?
I, that's my personal choice.
I don't have to at all.
Continue on.
Yeah, it's just my personal choice.
Whatever works, fellows, I don't want to.
No, it's, we all have to live by our own.
Greetings. It's truly a pleasure and an honor to come and visit with you folks today. This is year number 42 that our agency has had the opportunity to insure Lincoln County, and it's, it's truly an honor. Our agency's celebrating our 77th anniversary. We've been doing business for four generations. We thank you very much for your business. This county has truly been an outstanding environment and culture over the years. And I, I sincerely mean that. It's always been top-shelf professional organization. And that's also been reflected in the loss ratio that we've had over the years. I did bring along with me a loss run that just kind of shows what we've had for losses over the last three years. We have had a little bit of a spike the last couple of three years. Nothing serious at all over the years. It's been very good. I just have one copy. So this is yours. I'll just leave this with you. You can just hand it around and pass it around. Currently, there are, the insurance climate in South Dakota, there's two companies that insure public entities, counties in South Dakota. That's basically the pool and EMC. We've been insured with EMC from the beginning, 42 years ago. They're an A-rated company. They've been around for over 100 years. They do a lot of public entity business, a lot of counties, schools, township, cities. They specialize in that in all 50 states. They do a good job, is that's what they specialize in. And also, we formed a safety dividend program back in about 1991 with EMC that kind of gives us the best of both worlds. It gives us the opportunity to pay a dividend when we have three good years put together. I should back up. In the program, there's about 18 counties. So they add all that together, and if we have a loss ratio of about 60% or less, then they're able to divide that up based on the premium of all the counties. Now, due to our losses and the problems that occur within the state, it's been quite a while since we've had a dividend, but the potential is there. But anyway, they are a good company. They, we kind of have the best of both worlds with that. Let me just share with you a little bit about what's going on in the insurance. First of all, I bring good news because I, things are relatively stable with EMC and insuring counties, so I'm not bringing in anything. In today's world with crazy things going on, we're relatively stable, so that is good. But I, I just got some numbers I was going to share with you. In 2020, there were 22 natural disasters in the United States that were over $1 billion. To put that in perspective, you go back 40 years, the average is 6.6 per year. You go back the six years from 2015 to 2020, the average is 10. So as you can see, the trend is, there's a wildfire in California or flood and somewhere practically all the time when we're turning on the news. And that, frankly, folks, does affect us all in a small way just because of reinsurance. We're kind of all in the same boat when it comes to reinsurance. Once again, in a small way in South Dakota, but was it last year or the year before, we had that terrific wind in Iowa, which was a huge clam. Though, you never know when it's going to affect us here. Though, you never know when it's gonna affect us here, so it does affect our rates in general to some degree. With that in mind, the renewal I bring to you today is up a little bit. I think the total increase might be around seven percent in that ballpark, which is fairly common. When we blend in the work comp, I think it comes in closer to about three to four, right in that neighborhood. So, that's a pretty reasonable increase in today's world. As we know, the cost of construction of our buildings is ramped up significantly. So.
That all comes into play.
If I could just hand out, what I'd like to do, if it's okay, if we could do a thirty-thousand-foot overview of our coverages, especially for new guys that are here that wanna review that. And I'll be as brief and as quickly as I can do this without.
What I have here is the property schedule. And the first item shown on here, on the first page, shows the courthouse because it's not a part of the blanket, okay? And the rest of it is all part of the blanket. The total on this is about thirty-two million.
So, this is our, what our buildings are insured for. You can see the courthouse and the contents on the first page, and then thereafter, they're all listed. They're all insured for their replacement cost. We do still have the fairground buildings, the old fairground buildings on here for the time being. I don't know if that's gonna be coming up soon or what the plan is there. Obviously, we've added the new facility in Lennox on, but the old fairgrounds are still Got the broadest perils available. What's not insured is flood, earthquake, and war. Includes systems breakdown, equipment breakdown with the same deductible. I know you asked that one other time, Joel. It's got the same deductible of five thousand dollars with a ten thousand dollar wind and hail deductible. EMC does have a broader property form, just for municipalities, it's quite a little broader than what's normal. We've got a very good rate on it, it's a nine cent rate, which is really, but when you buy thirty-two, nearly thirty-three million dollars worth, that helps a lot to get a good rate. Got a couple of loss payees. We got Jeff and Sally Goman on there and the US Bank, so they're listed on there. By the way, any questions along the way, just feel free to bring them up anytime. You know, maybe a good idea on the property, EMC has a real good loss control program that, including the risk management services looking at property, we might wanna look at our replacement cost and evaluate what we have, especially on the courthouse. I don't know when the last time we did that, but they come out and do that for us. May not be a bad idea to have them come out and take a peek, just to see what they come up with. I do have a couple other handouts. If we don't have any questions on the property, I'll move right along.
Thanks, Mark.
This next one here is what's called the inland marine, and I don't know how the industry comes up with their names. This here is coverage for the equipment that's typically taken out of the buildings. Most of it's in the highway department, some of it's the sheriff's.
These items here are insured for their actual cash value. You'll notice on the, on the very first page on the top, it shows a catastrophic limit of three million ninety-one thousand seven eighty-eight. That's the total of most, of the first section of it, which is the highway departments. And what I do after we get done with this meeting, typically I'll go down and talk to the highway department folks and leave them a copy, and every year, they review this to adjust values, take things off, just, you know, add and delete what needs to be done. Sherry works on that as well, so. So, I don't, each year, I question how much of this you guys really wanna see, but I guess a creature of habit, I've always included a copy of the inland marine and the ones, I've got one other one as well. So, once again, these items are insured for their depreciated value, so at claim time, they're gonna pay us the lesser of what it's insured for or its actual cash value. So, it's important that we wanna adjust the values because we wanna pay for something that we would never collect. So, I usually work with, talk with Terry about that, and we'll fine-tune those as we go. Quite often, we find is some of the bigger pieces of equipment, even though they're depreciated, the new ones have gone up so much that the actual cash value is about the same. And the sheriff's vehicle contents are listed on here, and we got some radio towers and drone. Do we have one drone or two?
Two.
Two, okay. I should check on that.
I can double-check with Carol, but I thought that they, I thought that they had two.
Yeah. I thought there was two, but we should double-check that. I see one listed on here, so there might be another one there somewhere. And this portion does have a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible on the inland marine. The last section I've got here is I did run a copy of the auto schedule, moving along to that section, unless there's any questions on the inland marine. The auto schedule also is fairly lengthy, there's a hundred and thirteen vehicles on here. I don't know if you guys want a copy of that. I do have one if you want it. Totally if you, if you want one, Sean.
Here's one.
Okay. Thank you.
Each year I run these, I kinda question how much of this you guys wanna look at. But again, this portion, Sherry goes over it as well and highway department.
They would have more knowledge on each individual vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. And the sheriff.
Our liability limit is a million dollars, includes our un- and underinsured motorists. In addition to that, we have an umbrella, a five million dollar umbrella going on top of that, so basically six million dollars of liability coverage. Ten thousand dollars of medical on some of the vehicles, not all of them because it's a duplication of work comp. Those vehicles that could be hauling non-employees, we include medical on them. There's a thousand dollar deductible comp and collision. Higher than non-owned auto coverage is provided for all of your employees. Includes physical damage if non-employees are driving their personal vehicles on behalf of county business. We include pollution coverage if we happen to drop a load of herbicides or whatever into the Sioux River. The same limits of liability provided for pollution. Keep in mind, we're insuring the vehicle only here, and then the other attachments we put on that inland marine schedule for the highway departments primarily. Got a broad endorsement that we include, which includes zero glass coverage, not only for the repair but also for replacement. That's a nice feature. Also includes some towing coverage, five hundred dollars for trucks, hundred dollars for cars. And once again, there's a broadening endorsement included. That's the last handout I have. I'm just gonna run over a couple other areas here real quick. General liability, we got a million dollars of coverage, two million aggregate for the general operation of the county. It's got a thousand dollar deductible. Exclusions would be pollution. We also include nurses liability on a contingency basis. Includes the fair boards, weed board, includes employee benefit liability coverage for anything we could get tangled into for the administration of our benefit packages of health insurance or whatever. That liability is included with the same limit. We've got a separate policy for the airport, that's got a two million dollar limit for that. And that includes contingent products and completed operations coverage if we get tangled into something there. The drone that has a separate liability limit of a hundred thousand dollars with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. Since they're new, the industry has, still is nervous about them, so at least they do provide the coverage, not all do, so that coverage is there. The next coverage I wanna mention to you is the heirs and emissions coverage, and for whatever reason, employers call it the linebacker. How they came up with that, I don't know. An heirs and emission or a directors and officers policy should be called a linebacker, but it is. But this policy is extremely broad. It's a wrongful acts and sharing agreement with about thirteen exclusions. Some things that you would really expect to be excluded, intentional acts and things like that. But it is a very broad policy. It includes all employees, all board members, states and deputy states attorneys. It includes the planning and zoning board, non-monetary suits, employment practices liabilities included. It's really a loaded policy. The states attorneys of our counties really speak highly of this policy, and we use it. And it gets used a lot, particularly in South Dakota. It's got a retro date, meaning going back to October of nineteen eighty-eight, meaning any claims brought from then up until now would still be covered. And before that, it was written on an occurrence form, so coverage goes back a long ways.
Mark, what's the deductible on it?
Great question. The deductible is ten thousand dollars is what the deductible is. They've changed most all of them in South Dakota to that, some of them are twenty-five. It's really gotten a lot of play, that particular policy. And I gotta, this is the last handout I've got for you guys, but I did bring a little flyer, and I was noticed on here. Insured serving on boards of other taxes exempt entities at the direction of this board. The coverage extends to that as well. Also, the estates or heirs of deceased persons who were insured, if something comes up after the fact, when you guys are no longer, it covers all past.
Mark, I wanna go back to this issue of other persons who serve on boards, coverage for them. Is there a distinction made for people who are in a volunteer capacity versus employed versus contractors? If you know, is there any distinction in the policy on that? Because I think there was some discussion in front of this board on this very issue before.
That's a great question. And I think I'm gonna have to research that, Joel. Positive. The answer. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Get the answer for you on that. I'll make a note and check on that, Joel.
This many provides coverage for the decisions you guys are making. That's really what this policy is for. So, sitting on a board, you certainly wanna know that there's some liability coverage Law enforcement have their own separate liability policy, that's got a million dollar limit, and then the umbrella goes over that as well. Provides coverage for their professional coverage, it includes libel and slander and false arrest, defamation of character, all those things, personal injury that you would need for law enforcement. That also has a ten thousand dollar deductible, and moonlighting is included in the event that your folks are doing some moonlighting. I mentioned the umbrella, that's a five million dollar umbrella, goes over and above all the other coverages with the exception of the airport, the drone, and our employer's liability on our work comp policy. That has a separate two million dollar limit, which is rarely used because they use the We buy some data compromise and cyber coverage. I know Zach is usually with me, and he usually talks this portion of the coverage. We've got a hundred thousand dollars of coverage on the data compromise and two fifty on the cyber. You know, he's worked with Jake to fine-tune those limits and the coverages that Jake has felt that we've needed. You know, you'll see on there, we did have a pretty good sized claim on that here a year or two ago. I'm certainly not an expert in that area at all. I'm old enough that you're a little fuzzy to me, but I know Zach and Jake have worked on that, and I think they've got that. Unless you want any other limits, or we can sure provide that or talk to Jake if he feels that those aren't adequate.
Yeah, I think the cyber issues are very important today. Not only has this county been successfully attacked previously, but it always could be in the future. So, I think we certainly wanna pay attention to that.
You are so right, Joel. The limit on there now is two hundred and fifty thousand, that we have on the cyber, hundred thousand on the data compromise. It's got a thousand dollar deductible. And I'll probably have Zach reach out to Jake on that once again to visit on those limits perhaps, just to see if everything seems to be in line. We do have a crime section of the policy where we include ten thousand dollars of money and securities in and out, that's excluded under the property form. Plus, there's employee dishonesty of twenty-five thousand dollars per employee. In addition to that, we've increased that to a hundred thousand for Sherry, Steve, and for Becky, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Deborah Black. It includes twenty-five thousand dollars of faithful performance coverage, faithful performance of duty, which is used occasionally. I just note that we did, I did mention to you, if you wanted to take that blanket from twenty-five thousand up to fifty, it cost a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and if you wanted to go to a hundred thousand, it would cost two hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the year. But anyway, we do have twenty-five thousand at the present time. The work comp, that's with the pool, and the employer's liability is at two mil- The work comp, that's with pool and the employer's liability is at 2 million. They're most competitive. We moved it away from EMC. Oh, it must be 10 years ago now, something like that. They were more competitive than EMC was. So that's the, that's the 30,000 overview summary of the coverages that we have. If you have any questions, I can field them.
Thank you, Mark. Do any of the members of the commission have questions for Mark? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for your business. Appreciate it. And I'll get back to you on the question of volunteers on the linebacker, you know, coverage.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, folks.
Have a good week. All right, the next issue on our agenda is the county canvas of the October 5th, 2021 referendum election.
Do we have to do a motion to renew the insurance?
I don't know. Do we?
I believe we do.
Okay. With that said, then.
Madam Chair, I ask for executive session or commission.
There's a request for executive session. Under what?
Conflict.
That would be under subsection one and potentially number three. So, members of the board, you've heard a request from Chairman Poppins for a motion for executive session to fall under 1-25-2 sub one and sub three for the purposes of discussing a conflict. Is there a motion?
I gave you the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
For the clarification, which subsection are we going in under?
To come out of executive session.
I shall move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. We're out of executive session. We're back in open session. Would anybody, any commissioner like to make a motion regarding the renewal quote with Jensen Insurance?
I would like to move, Mr. Chair, that we renew the quote of Jensen Insurance and table that till our next meeting.
Okay, so there is a.
Two parts to that. Is it to renew and table or just a table?
I guess to table.
Just a table. I will second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to table action on the renewal quote, which does need to be reauthorized to Tuesday, which is our next meeting next week. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. The motion passes. We will put on the agenda, Madam Auditor, for next Tuesday, the issue of renewal quote with Jensen Insurance. Thank you. Okay, now, seeing no other agenda items that we need to resolve, we've got issue number six, which is county canvas of the October 5th, 2021 referendum election.
Let me get Kayla in here.
Hold on. Before we launch into a rather lengthy process of canvassing the vote, do we want to take up issue number seven?
That'd be fine.
Thank you. So, issue number seven is authorization to hire outside counsel for labor issues. Mr. Golden.
Thank you. Earlier this week, we have received a letter and notification that the highway department is seeking to form a union. Since that is occurring, that is a very specialized area of law. That is one that the state's attorney's office doesn't possess that specific set of expertise in. And so we're asking for outside counsel to assist us, advise us, and to review the contract if the union is formed.
You've heard the request, members of the commission. Is there a motion to hire outside counsel for labor issues? Or do you have more questions?
I guess we have no motion, Mr. Chair.
Well, maybe while some are collecting their thoughts, Mr. Golden, is the petition to the petition to, the name of the petition that's been publicly filed is escaping me. That document is publicly available for the public to view, correct?
This is not an area of expertise of mine. This is one of those questions where, this is why I'm asking for assistance. It is a letter that was presented to our HR department with a petition attached to it. I have done minimal research. I spent hours doing research on it, enough to know that there's just areas that I don't know how to answer the question, and that's why I'm asking for the assistance.
Is this person going to advise us on the issue of whether or not this is a publicly available document?
That would be something that I would discuss with them and.
Have any, have any of the documents that we've received been filed with any government agencies in the state of South Dakota?
Has been filed with the Department of Labor.
Okay. And so, we'd have to check with the Department of Labor to find out whether or not that document is publicly available?
Yes. I know any decision if we, if it winds up in a hearing, that would be open to the public.
Sure. And so, would you be able to check with the Department of Labor yourself to determine if that's a public document?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if there is no motion right now from any of the members to hire outside counsel for labor issues, is there a motion to table this issue till next Tuesday?
I'll shall move.
Okay. There is a motion to table the authorization to hire outside counsel for labor issues till Tuesday. Is there a second? Commissioner Gibbon, I think your motion fails for lack of a second. And seeing no other issues on the agenda, we will move on to this issue of conducting the county canvas of the October 5th referendum election. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
So, as the duties of the official board of canvassers, it's our responsibility, your responsibility, to open the returns from each precinct which are found in each poll book, satisfy the returns are genuine and not forged, tabulate the returns from the precincts and certification of provisional ballot count, declare the results, and make an abstract of the results. So what we're going to do is we're going to hand you a book along with the information inside. You're gonna tell me which precinct you have. I'm gonna read off the yes, no votes and the turnout, and we're gonna make sure that they all agree.
Are we going to, do you need a motion for us to convene as a canvassing board or not?
No, no. And then, just while we get the first information, Lincoln County does have 41,578 active registered voters, 4,422 inactive voters. On the October 5th election, there was an 8.01 of active voters turnout. Total ballots cast were 3,330 with 422 being yes and 2,906 being no. Commissioner Gibbon, which district do you have? Precinct do you have?
I have.
This is. This is Norway and Fairview Incorporated.
All right, I have total active voters, 327, seven yes votes, 67 no votes. Total precinct, what's the total precinct? That's total, total votes in the precinct? 74. It's a 22.63 turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you should have Highland Canton.
Yes.
Okay. On that, you have 613 active voters. 10 of them were yes, 133 were no. Total votes of 143 with a 23.33% turnout.
Correct.
And Commissioner Aaron's, you have Lincoln Delaware?
Correct.
278 active voters, three voted yes, 61 voted no. Total votes 64 with a 23.02% turnout. Commissioner Gibbon, you should now have Grant. 267 active voters, five yes, 50 no, for a total of 55 with a 20.6% turnout.
Okay, correct.
Correct.
Commissioner Poppins, you should have Dayton. 549 active voters, four yes, 71 no, 75 percent, or 75 total votes for a 13.66 turnout.
Correct.
Commissioner Aaron's, you should have LaBalle.
Yes.
Total active voters, 424, two yes votes, 83 no votes, 85 total votes with a 20.05% turnout.
So if they didn't list the number of votes cast on the registration sheet, signed by the superintendent and the judges, how do we reconcile that?
The white sheet on the top.
Okay. I think they wrote it on the green sheet. Did they write it there though? Okay. That checks out now.
Okay, so Commissioner Gibbon, and you got Perry?
Correct.
591 total active voters, 14 yes, 126 no, 140 votes cast, 23.69% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you have Springdale. 1,547 active voters, 17 yes, 118 no. Total votes of 135 with an 8.73% turnout.
Correct.
And Commissioner Aaron's, do you have Delapri yet or?
Correct.
Okay, 1,373 voters, eight yes, 163 no, 171 total votes for 12.45 voter turnout.
Thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, do you have Hudson Eden?
I have Hudson and Eden.
314 total active voters, seven yes, 48 no, 55 total votes, 17.52% turnout.
Correct.
Canton, or Joel, you're gonna have Canton, one, two, three. 1,241 active voters, 27 yes, 254 no, one over vote, one under vote, 283 total votes for a 22.8% turnout. Mike, you have Worthing Lynn. 814 active voters, 10 yes, 130 no, 140 total, 17.2% turnout.
Correct.
Two big ones.
All right, Commissioner Gibbon, you have T. 3,071 active voters, 29 yes, 252 no. Total of 281 votes for a 9.15% turnout.
Correct.
Joel, you'll have Lennox. There are 1,430 active voters. 12 voted yes, 179 voted no, total of 191 votes cast for a 13.36 turnout. Don't.
They can't add.
That's probably true.
Want to change it? Yep.
Commissioner Poppins, you're gonna have Brooklyn Beersford Pleasant. 591 active voters, four voted yes, 104 voted no. Total votes of 108, 18.27 turnout.
Correct.
Commissioner Aaron's, you're gonna have Harrisburg one. 1,747 active voters, 34 yes, 97 no. 131 total votes cast for a 7.5% turnout.
T is done. Let's see. Was this the other T?
Yes.
Okay, so they were, they were both together. Okay, all right.
So, Commissioner Gibbon, you'll have Harrisburg two. 1,879 active voters, 40 yes, 197 no. 237 votes cast for 12.61% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, Canton four and five has 692 active voters, 23 yes, 115 no. 138 voter turn, or ballots cast, 19.94% turnout. Commissioner Aaron's, you're gonna have Sioux Falls one 11. 1,999 active voters, 28 yes, 87 no, 115 total ballots, 5.75% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you'll have one 12. Commissioner Poppins, you'll have 112. 2,531 active voters, eight yes, 31 no, 39 total votes for 1.45% turnout.
4554.
Did you give Commissioner Gibbon's 113 yet? Commissioner Poppins, you'll have Sioux Falls, 113. 1,028 voters, two voted yes, 15 voted no. Total ballots cast were 17 for a 1.65% turnout. Commissioner Gibbon, you have 114. 1,325 active voters, four yes, 34 no, 38 total ballots for a 2.87% turnout. And then, did Commissioner Aaron's get 115?
Yes, I have 115.
Okay. 115 has 1,428 active voters, 21 yes, 81 no, for 102 ballots cast for a 7.14% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you'll have Sioux Falls, 116. 1,101 total active voters, six voted yes, eight voted no, 14 total ballots for a 1.27% turnout. 1,953 active voters, five voted yes, 24 voted no, 29 total ballots, 1.48% turnout. Commissioner Aaron's, you'll have Sioux Falls, 210. 2,142 active voters, 17 yes, 53 no, 70 ballots cast, 3.27% turnout. Commissioner Gibbon, you'll have Sioux Falls, 211. 2,693 active voters, 26 yes, 121 no. Total 147 votes or ballots, 5.46% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you have Sioux Falls, 212. 1,195 active voters, five voted yes, 22 voted no, 27 total ballots, 2.26% turnout. Commissioner Aaron's, you'll have Sioux Falls, 213. 2,497 active voters, 20 yes, 58 no, 78 total ballots, 3.12% turnout. Commissioner Poppins, you have 215. 1,670 active voters, 14 yes, 55 no, 69 total ballots cast, 4.13% turnout. Commissioner Aaron's, you'll have Sioux Falls, 216. 2268 active voters, 10 voted yes, 69 voted no, 79 total ballots cast, 3.48% turnout. And just to recap, again, we have 4,1578 total active voters. 422 yes votes, 2,906 no votes, one over vote, one under vote, for a total of 3,330 votes with a 8.01% turnout.
There?
No, we need to sign this paper first.
I did sign that.
Then, fine. I'm just used to telling me what to do.
Does that complete all the canvassing work?
That is all the canvassing.
Okay, thank you for the, thank you for the work on that.
You're welcome.
Got a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. We are adjourned.